Us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here today. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help. We ask your guidance throughout this meeting that you, that all of our thoughts and actions would reflect your will. Amen.
Please join me in the salute to the flag, the symbol of our great republic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the motion's called for an executive session to be held on April 15th at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The official business to come before this board, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Mr. Ryan.
Nothing to report to the board, thank you.
Okay. Are there any committee and/or legislative reports? We'll start with Gary Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Angus. Last week, we were in Phoenix testifying on behalf of the bill by Regina Cobb, 2467. We got a unanimous vote out of committee, and so it's moving forward to committee whole. Thank you.
Yeah, I heard it moved, did it move unanimously out of committee?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Nothing today, Madam Chairman.
Okay, I'm gonna do this, I'm looking at you. Supervisor Bishop.
Only to report that I've attended the CSA meetings and also the Legislative Policy Committee meetings and chaired the Medium County Caucus down in Phoenix.
Very good. Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing today, Madam Chairman.
Okay, I have to report that we did hold our annual meeting of the Mojave County Employee Benefit Trust, and I want to thank Supervisor Johnson, you know, we moved to this venue on his suggestion and then the vote of this board, and it was a very good decision. I believe that the, some employees got to see it live, you can watch it archived at your convenience. It was a good meeting, we, we got some good news, no rate hikes, we're putting in a few extra bonuses, benefits for our employees. One of them that I'm most excited about is Teladoc, and for those of you who don't know about Teladoc, I really suggest you speak to your department heads or HR and find out. It used to be, for the last several years, it was a $25 copay. We have cut that to $10 because we believe that once it's utilized and people understand what it is, it'll be used a lot, it will save time and it will save money, and I think it's a great benefit that we provide to our employees. We will have a full report on the status of that, that trust, I believe, May 5th at our first meeting in May, is that true? Erin Collins would have been here today, but I believe his daughter's getting married and he's out of the country. So that's all I have. Anything else from anyone? All right, how about our county administrator?
I have no report today, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Next up is the approval of the March 4th, 2019 Board of Supervisor Meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm gonna open up now the call to public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting pursuant to ARS 38-43101. H, a public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do not have anybody signed up, but I will open it up if anybody wants to come forward and have their three minutes. Got anything that's not on the agenda? Going once? Going twice? Closed. Close the call to public. We have a couple of presentations this morning. Number one is the adoption of a proclamation declaring the week of April 7th through 13th, 2019, a National Crime Victims Rights Week in Mojave County. We just need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation, the adoption of this week, April 7th through the 13th, 2019, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Mojave County.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our next up is the adoption of a proclamation declaring April as Fair Housing Month in Mojave County. Again, need a motion.
I'll make that motion also, make a motion that we adopt this proclamation declaring April as Fair Housing Month in Mojave County.
Second the motion.
Second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And if anybody wants to read those proclamations, they can find them on our website. Okay. We move on now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, items 5 through 33, will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. So, let's start with Supervisor Johnson. Do you have any items you wish to pull?
28 and 30, Madam Chairman.
I'm sorry, say that again.
28 and 30.
28 and 30. Supervisor Bishop?
I have none.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item 9 and 11.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
None this morning, thank you.
Okay, very good. So I need a motion to approve consent agenda items 5 through 33 minus 9, 11, 28, and 30.
So made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's see what mine is here. Approve designating position number 200203 a program coordinator bioterrorism as one full-time employee funded through the bioterrorism grants program and through the Department of Health. We have Denise Burley here.
Good morning.
It's all yours.
Good morning. Can you give me a description of what the responsibilities of the bioterrorism employee would be? Absolutely. They really kind of drive public health response to emergencies, which have to do with infectious disease, just any kind of public health emergency such as, even when we had the, the snow issue, we actually organized our team then to be available to provide nursing to the shelters. Kind of anything emergency-wise really, honestly, because then we, we have a public health response to that, where we will either provide nursing assistance, we may provide infectious disease prevention assistance, or some sort of response to those items.
So, Madam Chairman, ma'am, it's more general emergency than bioterrorism?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly prepare for that. We have, we have plans that help us respond to those issues, we have coop plans, we have response plans to any type of emergency that might come up in the county or within the state that we can actually provide a response team for.
Madam Chairman, ma'am, so I would assume that a bioterrorism event is gonna have a similar response to some kind of contagious disease outbreak?
Correct, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else have questions? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I move that item 9 be adopted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, approve the use of Mojave County job order 16PS 1304 JLC well maintenance with Weber Water Resources. Who's here?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ma'am, this is probably more of a technical question, I just wanted a description of the work that we're doing more than how we procured that work.
Okay. Mr. Lutowski's here, and he can speak to the specifics of the project. But we have job order, job order contracts currently for electrical work. When these projects rise above 50,000, we bring these projects back to the board so that it's transparent and you're aware of the work, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Gould. The I-40 water system, which is owned and operated by Mojave County and primarily serves Griffith Energy, is comprised of six wells, and four of the six wells up to present have been converted from a submersible pump to an above-ground, I should say, vertical hollow-shaft pump with above-ground motor. We engaged in this some, just recent years ago, on the premise that the vertical hollow-shaft conversion provides for increased reliability and serviceability operating on a variable frequency drive, as well as, most importantly, nominal electric savings, which is still being evaluated, but most importantly, as it relates to future maintenance and replacement with the above-ground motor, it would no longer cause a need to pull the submersible pump in future maintenance, as well as mainly motor replacement. So, we find this incredibly advantageous, this approach with doing the vertical hollow-shaft conversion, which does incur a somewhat higher cost than just a pure replacement of a submersible pump, but with the above-ground motor, future replacements would just be changing out the above-ground motor, not having to incur the owner's costs, as well as, most notably, the delay in pulling a submersible pump. What happened with well 6 is we actually had scheduled in the board adopted FY19 budget, a well conversion, it was well number 9, but because well number 6 failed on us, we are pursuing this vertical hollow-shaft conversion for well 6, and then aiming for FY20 to do the well 9 conversion.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Lutowski, have we had trouble with motors failing in the submersible pumps?
Supervisor Gould, in general, we've seen these failures occur primarily representing the, the end of service life. We've had just a couple of anomalies with the pumps failing potentially prematurely, in advance of their typical end of service life. So, in essence, with well number 6, this was just a, a failure rather on the time of the submersible pumps' end of service life, but we are believing that the vertical hollow-shaft arrangement will actually extend the service life, plus make that much easier to facilitate replacements in the future.
Sure. Madam Chairman, Mr. Lutowski, how many wells do we have in that area?
Supervisor Gould, six wells service the backbone well production for Griffith Energy. We do have a seventh well that the county has developed for its own use, it is not connected to the system at this point.
So we, Madam Chairman, Mr. Lutowski, we have more than one pump in each of these wells if we have a pump number 9?
Supervisor Gould, we have six production wells, so one pump per well, with the heavy, heavy demand that Griffith Energy draws, especially during the summer months, we are required and, and do need to have multiple, actually, the bulk of the well field producing. So, again, being on top of having that capability of doing quick repairs in the future is very advantageous for us.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Some of the confusion on the well numbering, we've always had that, we've got more than six, more than seven well sites, so the wells are referred to by the well site, that's why Steve referred to well site number 9, but it doesn't mean that we have nine wells, we've only got the seven wells with pumps in them.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I move that item 11 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 28, approve a refund in the amount of $3,750.89 to Heather Trammell Lamb for the tax lien on parcel 311-05174A that was sold to her in error. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can somebody explain to me how this was sold in error when they indebted to the city in 2006?
Well, I'm here from the Mojave County Attorney's Office, I could try to answer at least some of the legal part of it. I don't know how that it was, I don't know, well, I'll back up a little bit. The property was dedicated to the city in 2006. In 2006, the city took ownership of the property. After that, the assessor's office assessed taxes and the treasurer's office collected taxes. What should have been done is that they should not have collected taxes on city-owned property. And so, starting in 2007, taxes were collected, 2007 through 2016, and those taxes should not have been recouped. How that happened, I don't have an answer to.
Who did we collect taxes from?
We did not collect taxes, it was, they didn't pay their taxes, no, no taxes were paid, so there was tax liens, then this person then bought up the tax lien, Heather Trammell Clant, Trammell Lamb, she then foreclosed on the property in 2018, and then after she foreclosed on the property, we, we discovered the error and decided that we need to fix the error by bringing this item back to the board.
The city, when they take something over, aren't they supposed to submit their minutes to the county to have it removed from them?
I don't know. I, I'd have to look to see whether that'd be part of the dedication process or not.
It seems like we missed something there that, that should have been done. Obviously, this person's being very nice to us. That was all, I was just very curious how we'd gone that many years with, have the city saying something about owning the property?
Yeah. Who?
Cindy Cox.
Oh, I hear the treasurer wants to talk to this?
If you want to speak to her, I'd be happy to.
So this particular issue came about because we're doing the tax deed sale, and we find the errors that happened in the records, and this apparently goes back to a 2006, for lack of a better word, fat finger error by an employee who is no longer here. And instead of being in the name of the King, City of Kingman, which my understanding is our assessor has not been here long enough and our, is, her predecessor can't be asked, but my understanding is that no property, no paperwork through the city was filed, but it should have been recorded in the name of the City of Kingman, it was not. Every year, when that file is uploaded to my system, whoever the owner of record is, is who we send the tax bill to, and that continued to happen through the years, and the City of Kingman didn't come forward because they didn't know we were sending out tax bills, and there was, there was nothing done, basically. And then it went out for a tax lien sale, as it should have, after two years of the delinquent taxes, and it was subsequently sold. And the reason why it hasn't come back to you quicker is because no one has said anything. This person foreclosed on it, and what happened was, it had to go through the court system then to reverse the foreclosure, so there was a case, and not only has this investor been extremely cooperative, I can't even tell you how cooperative this investor has been, they are not asking for anything other than their interest, not their attorney costs, not, they, they don't, they're not here to come and stick it to the county. This is a, an error was made, we found it, luckily, through the tax deed process, this is one of, this is during the 800 parcels, is this part of the 800 parcels? This is part of the 5,400?
Yeah.
So, so one out of the 5,400 parcels that we found, this particular issue happened. We are finding some, some other things.
When we found the ownership issues, yeah.
Yes, when we found the ownership issues. And that's why running the title search is extremely important during the tax deed process.
Don't we, don't we send a registered letter to the people right before we do the final?
Not registered.
Certified.
Certified.
Untaxed deed, certified.
Untaxed, yeah.
And did we get anything back on the recall, I'm just curious, it seemed like we'd follow up somehow.
We discovered a whole series of ownership issues, and that was brought before the board the last session, that you approved that we could do abatements, because there were some issues that came up during this current go-around of tax deed processing. This particular item was already through the court system because it had an investor, and in this particular case, the county attorney's office had to file for a special rule of motion because judgment had already been issued. So this one is also an ownership issue under the same auspice of what we brought the last grouping, however, this had an investor. This was not a county-held lien that we were providing the tax deed processing for.
So, so we couldn't bring it to you last time, because it was, we were in the middle of the litigation process and making sure that everything was, all the ducks were in a row, so this is another ownership issue. But, again, I have to say, this is a, a good outcome of the, I mean, the best outcome I can see, of finding issues that we have within the, you know, treasurer to, I mean, assessor to treasurer, recorder to assessor to treasurer, it will happen, people are not infallible, so. And, and can I say that, that I do believe that there was more than one that was attributable to the same area in the office, and that person, as I said, is no longer gone, no, no longer there. So apparently, the issue was, recognized that there were errors being made, but not every error was caught during that time, so.
That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson.
The motion approved. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 30, set a public hearing on May 6, 2019 to discuss the rescission of ordinance 2016-05 that created MUNICODE and replace it with the original source ordinances passed by the Board of Supervisors. And that was brought by me. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm curious, before we send it back, why we'd be sending this back, it doesn't really...
Right. Is Yvonne Orr here? Is Yvonne here? And before she comes up, you know, just for a little history, we, early on, I think it was in 2014 or 15, we wanted, we discussed putting our ordinances together in a, in a way that people can go online and find out what our ordinances are, searchable, because it was really all, we hadn't codified it, it was just in some like big notebook, and, you know, if you look around the county, Bullhead City has it, Lake Havasu has it, and they all use this company called MUNICODE. And, so, that's what we discussed for many months about using this MUNICODE company, and, but, I'll let Yvonne sort of give, take it from there.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. When, when this was put into place, there were a number of concerns that we looked at, in essence, that would remove the authority of the ordinances, and then with the adoption of the new ordinance, that would become law. What happened is this company took a number of our ordinances and kind of threw them together. Let me, let me give just one example. There is a, there's kennel requirements for Development Services Department, there's also kennel requirements for Environmental Health, when realistically, they should have been identified as two separate ordinances under those two separate departments, they jumbled all the requirements together. I believe you did have a citizen come forward and point this out, that our ordinances were not correct. So, and I think from a legal perspective, Ryan can probably give you a more detailed answer.
Yeah, if I may address the board. The purpose, what we ultimately want to get at is that we want the law in Mojave County to be what the supervisors pass. The supervisors have that authority to pass ordinances, and that should be the law. And what you have in MUNICODE is you have most of that, but there's just a few discrepancies and things, a few things when some of those ordinances were combined, that it, it changed a little bit, changed a few things where you say, hey, that's a little bit different than what the supervisors passed. And so, we're trying to get it so that the original source, those, that the supervisors have passed, is the law. We want to make sure that that is. And, and, and so, that's, that's ultimately what we're trying to get at. This came about as we're trying to work on some other projects and some things, where we're trying to clean up some of the ordinances, and we say, hey, wait a second, there's, there's an issue here. This, this ordinance was combined at a different time as this ordinance, but they, the two were combined together, and it kind of changes a little bit, makes it a little bit confusing as well. So we want more clarity for the public, we want to make sure that we have those ordinances accurate, and, and also, I, I think, I think there was great intentions with, with the MUNICODE, there just, there was a few things that, that didn't exactly jive with what we wanted, what, what the county intended when they, when they voted on it.
Well, I, I also think that you're missing a piece, because part of that process, I mean, it wasn't, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, it was a very affordable service, they put it together, but it was really up to us to put it through its legal process. We were supposed to have our legal department go through those ordinances, you're right, they are our ordinances, and they should be correct. Somehow, that fell through the cracks. And so, I don't want to say that's all MUNICODE's issue, I mean, you know, I talked about Havasu and Bullhead, and they're smaller, I mean, we have so many, and maybe it was a Herculean, Herculean task at the time, maybe we should have started that first, before we went right to MUNICODE. So again, good intentions, we wanted to get this together, and so, now what's the fix? What are we gonna do now?
For, for the manager gets involved in this, I mean, we started this in 13, you did bring it up, and I think when Supervisor Bishop came on, she asked where it was, it was supposed to be a year deal, and we'd had some problems getting it, but you're correct, from what I'm reading, we had, it was a three-step process where we gave them all the papers that were in a drawer somewhere, and they put them together with their legal team and then sent them for a review. We were supposed to review them, so any mistake that's on that, in their MUNI thing is, is our fault, not their fault. I, I think it's still a great idea to have that, because if we go back to just looking for Jenny to find them in a drawer somewhere is not exactly, I mean, that's gonna be on Laserfish, and you can search, but you're searching by words, and for all those older people in here that search for words all the time, you know, it's kind of hard to remember what, where you want to search for each time, but I, I would like to see us make a go of MUNI, because like you said, the other cities and counties use it and don't seem to have a problem, I don't know why we're so slow.
And, Madam Chairman, it's, excuse my voice, it's my understanding, our IT department has done fabulous things in relation to making our, all of our documents searchable, instead of a picture or PDF, which was not searchable. Now everything's inputted into the computer, into our database, to where it's totally searchable. In fact, according to Nathan, and I'd like for him to come up here and address it if he would, I, I hate to put him on the spot, but it's my understanding, Mojave County's capability and what we've developed and evolved is, you know, will be something better and easier to utilize than, than the current MUNICODE system.
But what about the legal review? That seems to be where it all falls.
And, Madam Chairman, what, what legal has told you, you know, the Board of Supervisors in passing ordinance, ordinances, regulations, and rules, and whatever, had a specific intent and specific statute so they go, go by in passing those documents, in passing those instruments. And what MUNICODE did was, they jumbled some of those documents together, and if you look at the acceptance paperwork, it actually made MUNICODE supersede all the good work that the county had done over the years, and it, it took precedence, it governed, instead of our ordinances governing, and that was my main heartburn on it. When it was adopted, it was adopted by the board to do just that, it would become the law of the Mojave County and not the specific ordinances that were developed, and I think that's the main point that Mojave County Board of Supervisors needs to address. And I want to remind the board that this is just a set of public hearing to have this discussion, and really not to make a decision on it today.
Right, and I understand that, but, again, you know, now you make it sound like, you know, it's our, it's our fault, we, we, you know, agreed to do that, but I don't remember that. I mean, I don't remember it actually being brought to us that way. Does anybody, do you remember it being brought to us that way?
We brought it, I have the, the date here, Madam Chair, on June 20th, 16, we held a hearing and adopted the ordinance signifying the end of the project, where everybody was thanked, and we can't wait to get it up on the website, so, so we accepted it, but the same thing, the MUNI guys sent it to us, it was up to us to look through it and say, oh yeah, they overstepped here, or they combined two things, because the same thing I think we all envisioned was a, well, I use a book, because that's what I'm used to, a book where you looked and said, oh, P and Z or animal control, because that's always a big one, somebody's got a problem with animals, they look up under section 4 as animals, and they can see 1, 2, 3, and 4 of all the animal things. If we, if we go back to Laserfish where you have to put in animals and maybe you don't get the right word in, or, or you only get part of it because you didn't do, you don't get the whole picture, I think you have more problems. the whole picture, I think you have more problems. And that's, to me, that's a problem. I feel like we're taking this stuff back.
But don't we still have to do a complete legal review? I mean, that was always the issue. And who does it? And who signs off on that?
Well, we can do that, and we can certainly do that. I think at this point, you know, the motion is to set it for a public hearing. Our recommendation is to set it for a public hearing, and these are valid questions and things that we could address at that time. And certainly, we can, I can prepare a legal background and provide a memo for the board as well, so that you have that. And I don't think we're trying to replace the concerns that Supervisor Johnson has. Those are legitimate concerns, and we want to address those. We're not trying to avoid those. What we're doing is we're trying to correct some of the errors and try to get it to really what this board wanted to do back in June of 2016. That's what we're trying to get it at. And so at this time, I'd recommend we set it for a public hearing. That way, we can publish it, and we can move forward so that we can discuss it in May.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson.
Madam Chair, see, I don't see where this is a public hearing. We're the ones that made the MUNICODE, or the majority of us sitting here did. And we should be the ones to say if it works or it doesn't work. Now, if we're getting rid of it, that's great. It seems to me we should have a reason to have a public hearing to get rid of it. I don't know if the agenda item is worded wrong or not, but to go out to a public hearing to say we're just throwing it in the trash can doesn't make sense to me.
Because it's an ordinance, right?
Correct.
Because it's, we made it into an ordinance of itself, we have to deal with that ordinance.
Anytime you're modifying and amending an ordinance, you have to have a public hearing on it. So that's the legal part, why we have to have a public hearing. As to the reason, to answer Supervisor Johnson's question, is we want to get back to that original source of what the supervisors pass is the law in Mojave County. How that is then portrayed to the public, it could be through MUNICODE, or it could be through IT's in-house work doing it that way, you know, that would be something that would be discussed and debated and determined by the board. But for, I mean, the reason why, we have found errors in MUNICODE that we want, that need to be addressed and need to be fixed. And it's not effectively fulfilling the purpose that it was set out for in June of 2016.
And, Madam Chair, I just don't want to get caught up in, because the item says, "and replace it with original source ordinance." We're locked in that we have to get rid of it, instead of saying we're going to fix, if that's the board, the majority of the board.
No, I agree with you. I think since we can't talk about some of this stuff, that's going to be the time in May to talk about this in depth. Maybe it is just better to leave it a little more vague.
Well, then, if you left it vague, you would set a public hearing to discuss the rescission of the ordinance alone? Is that all that you wish to do?
And ideas going forward?
If I may, Chairman, as I recall, Supervisor Johnson is quite correct. It was supposed to come back to the board for clarification or editing, and that's how I recall it. And we have just failed to do that job, or we have not pursued correctly what our intentions were.
Okay. It's your pleasure. Supervisor Johnson.
Let me tell you, before you answer that, Supervisor Johnson, if I may interject, the reason why we wanted that original source ordinances, the purpose of that is to really get what the supervisors passed. The supervisors are the ones with the authority to enact ordinances in the county. And we're trying to say, okay, what did the supervisors pass? Those are the original source. That's the law in Mojave County. That's what we want. Not something that is, that was created by a code editor or something else that said, hey, let's put these together and so forth. No, it's got to be what the law was passed by the supervisors of Mojave County. That's why we put in there, or I asked to put that in there, replace with the original source ordinances, because we needed that part to say, okay, this is what the law is in Mojave County, so that we're clear to the public. That's why I wanted that part in there. I hope it hasn't pigeonholed you, Supervisor Johnson, that that wasn't the intention. It was really to make sure that we get in there what you, what the board has passed.
Madam Chair, then I would make a motion to set a public hearing for May 6, 2019, to discuss and including changes to ordinance 2016-05 and possible rescission of the MUNICODE.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Can we discuss something before we vote?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I do not believe it is legal to hire an outside firm to trans-slyther ordinances together. And if you were to charge somebody under that trans-slyther ordinance, I think that a sharp attorney could knock a hole in that. Because without, the board has to actually take action to create a law or an ordinance. And that is what you'd have to be charged under, not when they trans-slyther these things together and change the meaning. But I don't think you can just blanket, given an outfit, blanket authority to go in there and combine these things together.
Well, we did, what, may I say something? I don't believe we did. I mean, that was what, it was supposed to come back to the county and get a full legal review. At the time, we were told that it had been done. And that's what leads us up to today.
So currently, you may have trouble charging somebody with any of these crimes, whether they're legal or civil, because you've now muddied the water. And as a resident of Mojave County, I'm supposed to, ignorance of the law is no excuse. So I think you have a hard time charging people under these codes currently.
Now, two parts to that, Supervisor Gould. One is, you're correct that no person could create the law other than the county, other than the supervisors. So it can't be the, it can't be the person who published MUNICODE. That's correct. But in order to solve that problem, if you look at the language of ordinance 2016, that specific ordinance, that right there, the supervisors, when they passed that ordinance, said, okay, what is in MUNICODE, that is now the law. That's what they did. So that way, they could do the very things that you're talking about, so that they can say, okay...
I don't think that's legal.
Well, the supervisors passed it. The supervisors are the ones...
It doesn't matter, sir, whether the supervisors passed it or not. It matters whether it's legal. And they have to take action on these, and I don't think that they have the power to delegate their authority in the first place.
The language is, what we're talking about in MUNICODE is, most of it tracks what is going on with the ordinances. There are some slight things that need to be fixed, though. It's not significant, you know, not like in every single section and so forth. But it changes in a way where we've got to be able to clean it up. That's why, I mean, we're just trying to figure out how to clean that up.
I agree. It's a bad situation, and it's put the residents of Mojave County in a bad situation, because they don't know what the law is.
Correct. I would say that. But they do, we have the best situation now of, if you go to MUNICODE right now, this is what the county has adopted, and this is what it has. If there's discrepancy, you would have to find a specific discrepancy between what the supervisors passed and then what is in MUNICODE. Those would be the ones that would be difficult to enforce.
Right.
I'm a former defense attorney. If I found that, certainly, I would jump on that and be able to use that as a defense in a criminal case. But the defense attorney would have to be able to find that, and there's not a lot of those. But there are a few, and that's why we got to fix that. That's what we're trying to fix.
Since no one can look at the book and find the law, then it would be hard to find the loophole in the law, because you would have to find the law in the first place, which is the original problem.
I can find it. You can find it. It is findable today. It is searchable today. So you can go, you can go to MUNICODE, and you can find those. And then you can also find the ordinances that the supervisors have passed, because those are the two that you're comparing. And I've been able to find it, because I know how it works. And the public can do that today. The public can go there and look at the ordinances that the supervisors have passed, and they can also look at the MUNICODE, and they can compare the two. It is doable. I've done it. But it is difficult.
But for the average citizen to do that, the average citizen cannot find what the laws of the county are.
And that's what we're trying, we're trying to fix it.
Right. And I agree, that's a noble cause, but apparently, we didn't get it done.
Well, we didn't, because, no matter what, we still need that full legal review. And who's going to do it?
We'll do it. We'll do it. I mean, we'll certainly...
Do whatever it takes to get it done.
The thing, the question, to me, the biggest question that I think the board's going to have, well, there's a number of questions, but the big one is what to do with MUNICODE. I think Supervisor Johnson hit it on the nail. That's going to be a difficult challenge. Do we want to continue with it? Just, you know, make changes so that we can clean it up through MUNICODE and keep MUNICODE? Or get rid of MUNICODE, or use a different service, or whatever? Those would be something that you'll have to decide.
Okay. And we'll talk about that on May 5. Okay? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. All right, now we're going to public hearings. I have a request that everybody kind of speak into their microphones a little bit more, please. I have two now, stereo. Okay. Tim Walsh, our Development Services Director, brought us Agenda Item 33. I'm going to open up the public hearing, discussion and possible action, to allow for equestrian, a special use permit to allow for equestrian boarding up to eight horses. I have some people signed up to speak to this. First one up is our friend Mary Van Roy.
Thank you, Chairman, and just the board and staff. My name's Mary Van Roy, and I live at 4034 Blue Canyon Road in Lake Havasu City. And I was in the area that I received the letter from the zoning board about this horse boarding. And I went to the zoning board and said I approve of that. And I'm here again to say I approve of that. And I'm just in favor of the horse boarding that was approved unanimously by the zoning board. Equestrian life is really important to kids. And the family that's asking for this boarding permit has a daughter, and she has friends, and they have horses now that are other locations, and they'd like to bring them together. And she'd like to be able to have other young people board there, or whoever did want to board with her. And I think anyone who's grown up with horses and loved them understands why we feel it's so important to share that with the next generation. And Havasu Magazine just happened to come out with a spring issue, and the article is about Horizon 6 Trails and horses. And the person that was assigned to this responsibility to find equestrian life in Lake Havasu called me, so I invited all my friends over that we ride together, and she spotlighted quite a few of them. And I guess I just want to say, Horizon 6 is an equestrian community, and the zoning does allow for unlimited horses, which was kind of interesting to me. And I fully support it, and I hope that she, that you guys also support it and allow her to have her horse boarding facility. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Jennifer Mosh. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's Moshay.
Moshay. I was way off the bat. Okay.
And good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I need your name and your address.
My name is Jennifer Moshay, and I live at 4041 Littlefinger Road in Lake Havasu City, Arizona, in Horizon 6. And I am the one who applied for the special use permit to allow horse boarding of up to eight horses on my property, which, as we know, is already designated and zoned agricultural residential. The surrounding land uses in Horizon 6 consist of single-family residences with horse privileges. At the last meeting with the Board of the Zoning Commission, they unanimously recommended approval for this permit and thought it would be a great way to set a precedence in my community. By obtaining this permit, I'm allowing regulations to be set on the number of horses that are able to be boarded on my property. I'm wanting to work with the structure of the county's zoning to make this happen. I've already obtained two permits from the county. One is to demolish and remove a single wide mobile at the south end of my property. And then the second one was to upgrade an electrical panel. The only permit that I'm waiting to apply for is for my shade structure. That's currently going through an engineering process, so I can bring that to the county. I've applied for the special use permit to keep the passion for horses alive in the area of Horizon 6. My daughter, who came today, she is 12, and I can tell you that her horse boosts her confidence, has taught her about self-pride, ownership, and hard work. And I would like to be able to provide that to others. I have discussed this special use permit with my neighbors, and I do know that I have one neighbor in particular who is concerned about an increase in flies, an increase in traffic, and an increase in noise, and an increase in dust. In an attempt to accommodate my neighbors, I am placing a dumpster on the property with lids, and I have a sprinkler system to help with the dust. However, they did move into an agricultural residential area anyway when they moved there. I feel it's very important to keep horse privileges in our community. There are very few places people are able to keep and ride horses in Lake Havasu. And I believe Mojave County recognizes this, because they did designate a horse-only trail in our neighborhood. This designated horse trail is located only one acre to the west of my property, between the horse trail and being located on Littlefinger Road, which has the only wide shoulder up there for riding. Community members have safe and endless opportunities to access the desert. By obtaining this permit, I am ensuring the ability to always have horses on my property. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, that's all that's signed up. I will open it up to anyone who wants to speak about this.
Motion approved.
Oh, I haven't closed the public hearing. I have to close the public hearing, which I'm doing right now. Okay. Supervisor Johnson.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, I've got a few questions for the applicant. If the applicant can come back up to the podium. Ma'am, I certainly appreciate your championing the equestrian aspect of your endeavor. But I'm concerned, I'm looking at an aerial of your property, and there appears to be a great deal of miscellaneous objects on your property.
So, yeah, so there's the single wide at the south end of the property, and I've obtained a permit to remove that. I don't know what aerial you're replying, like what you're referencing.
It's our current assessor's aerial. But it appears like there's stored items such as refrigerators, car, bubble home...
That was removed prior to me purchasing the property. There is a double wide mobile at the back of the property, which is where I live. And then in the front, there is a single wide and a shed.
Okay.
So I don't know how old that aerial is.
I'm just concerned about the safety of not only the owners, but the horses themselves. So if you're going to assure me that that will be cleaned up and in a safe environment for both riders and horses, then I've got no problem with it, but I just was concerned.
Yes, definitely. It's my, my 12-year-old's going to be riding there, so definitely, it will be safe.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Agenda Item 34. I'm going to open the public hearing, discussion and possible action. This is a rezone from Assessor's Parcel 306-66027, from agriculture residential 36-acre minimum lot size to an agriculture residential 15-acre minimum lot size to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. I do have one person signed up, Robin Elias. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robin Elias. This is my aunt Michelle Dupree. We live at 1422 South Laguna Road, Golden Valley. Excuse us, we're, first time. We're asking for a rezone for our property. I would like to move over to the other side. My aunt's going to be on where we're at right at this point. I don't know what I'm doing.
She's asking for us to approve this, correct?
Please.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Chairman Angus, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I did come out and visit your property.
I heard.
And it looks like you're doing some wonderful things out there.
Well, thank you.
I have some concerns about the number of animals and how that might affect your neighbors. In fact, there's, the very closest neighbor did write a letter of concern. So I know that this is the former rough, sanctuary location, but that's all been wiped clean.
Okay.
And then you two purchased it as bare land. Is that correct?
Correct. And we've been doing some major works on it since June. And the end of September, we ended up bringing the horses in. We brought all the, we brought the animals in in September, at the end of September, beginning of October. We're still working on the property. We're still cleaning it all up, everything. Some of, some of the animals will be going with me because we do share the animals. Unfortunately, we thought of keeping my son's and my horse with my aunt's horse for, they didn't get separated for, because they're so used to playing with each other. I do own three dogs in the purchase of one dog that I ended up taking from my aunt because my son ended up falling in love with it because they play with each other all day. Her dogs, they are working dogs since they are cattle dogs. But she is in the process of using two of her cattle dogs as an aid for my, for her. Especially how she's hard of hearing and everything, and emotional support and everything. So we're in the process of working with that. Is there anything you want to say?
Can't hear.
I know, she's asking about the animals right now. No?
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I would just ask you to become familiar with Mojave County zoning ordinances and our laws, and especially when it comes to animals and dogs, because I think the neighborhood is, have been traumatized from that property in the past.
We completely understand. I mean, when we ended up purchasing it, like I said, in June, I came out at the end of August, we started working on it and everything else. And then that's when we ended up finding out what the property actually was. We are very concerned. We are very, these animals are our children. We take care of them just like if they were one of us, you know, playful, the whole nine yards on this deal.
Okay, well, that's all the questions I had. I just wanted to welcome you to Mojave County and.
Thank you.
If, if county offices can help you in any way, please don't hesitate to find out what, what you can and can't do, and we'll be glad to help you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, it's still a public hearing. Anyone else wants to speak to this? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Onto Item 35. I'm going to open the public hearing. This is a discussion and possible action. It's a rezone from a general commercial one-acre minimum lot size to a commercial manufacturing open lot storage zone in Kingman, the Kingman vicinity. I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Does anybody want to speak? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2019-35 for rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 324-09-19 from a general commercial one-acre to a commercial manufacturing open lot storage. It appears to be consistent with the neighboring businesses, so I will support that.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. That completes our public hearings. We're on to the regular agenda now. Item 36, brought by our Development Services Director. Discussion and possible action, direct development services to prepare an amendment to the Mojave County Land Division Regulations, along with any other document revisions required to allow reduced levels of service and infrastructure for rural recreation residential subdivision. Mr. Walsh.
Good morning, Chairman Angus, members of the board. This item is brought before you to seek your direction on whether the department should propose a new type of subdivision to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration and comment, and then be brought to the Board of Supervisors for consideration. Sometime back, we received a request from a developer seeking to develop what they, what they termed as a rural recreational residential subdivision, with the intent being decreased levels of, of infrastructure required for the subdivision, in particular bringing power out to the subdivision. The intent being to allow for larger lots. At this point, they're, they're proposing a 10-acre lot, but then not bringing power or some of the, the typical improvements that you would see as part of a subdivision. We, when we spoke with them, we indicated that, that we could process their request through the, the normal subdivision process. But as a department, we would, we would be recommending, we would not be able to support the petitions of acceptance requested due to the approved land division regulations and the requirements that were approved by the Board in those land division regulations, mainly being those infrastructure improvements, including power, telephone, and those that are required for, for subdivisions of that size. So what this action would do is, is basically direct staff to present to the, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration and comment, a type of subdivision that would allow reduced levels of improvements, and then bring that back to you all for an amendment to the land division regulations.
Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chairman. This is, isn't this a step backwards when we start allowing subdivisions to come in? With, I mean, we've done the dry lot subdivisions before and that backfired on us and.
Super, Chairman Angus, Supervisor Johnson, Steph believes exactly that, that in, in allowing a lesser standard for subdivision, you are taking a step backwards and, and requiring less than the typically, than the type of improvements that are typically anticipated when one, one purchases within a subdivision.
That's all Madam Chairman thinks. Madam Chairman, I've just got a suggestion for Mr. Walsh. Obviously, that there have been a number of parcels sold, and there'll be more parcels sold in the future. If, if I were to support this rural recreation designation, I would want to make sure that each and every one of those purchasers, and even the future purchasers, had a clear understanding of what will be available and not available. I think we're treading on some very delicate issues, and I would hate for anybody to purchase 10 or 20 acres, then understand that there'll be no electricity, there'll be no water infrastructure, and there'll be limited roads.
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Watson, that's well understood. And unfortunately, once the subdivision is platted, we, we are no longer involved in that.
Correct.
So once those sales are occurring, that's, we don't really have a say in, in what information is passed on to those prospective buyers.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Walsh, too, how do other counties handle this issue?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Gold, we've looked and we've, we've spoken with the developers. We haven't yet to find a, a county that, that has this type of, of arrangement or this type of, of lessened standards for a subdivision. We, we haven't, we haven't found one that, that has dealt with it like this.
So, so Madam Chairman, Mr. Walsh, under the, the current, what, they could have 40-acre parcels?
Correct. It would be 36.
Chris.
So, so currently, you can, you can subdivide down to 36-acre parcels without going through the subdivision process. Once you go less than the 36-acre parcel, you then invoke the, the land division regulations, which, which then require the, the improvements with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Just to add on to what Mr. Walsh said. In addition to the 36-acre unsubdivided land statutes that are in the ARS, if property is zoned correctly, they can split up to five times. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the properties could go down to like five splits on the 40s? Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
And I believe that if they go more than five in that whole area, they have to do a new subdivision report on top of that, too, which, which kind of limits it to a certain extent.
Is that true?
Madam Chairman, that's for the same owner. And Supervisor Gold is correct. If the same owner is limited to five, five splits, but different owners could also have the same opportunities.
Thank you. I do have somebody signed up for this.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
I'd like to speak.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
This is in my area, so I did go up and, and visit this location. It's about eight, nine miles from Highway 93 behind White Hills. And it's a very secluded area. The developers have put in quite a bit of groundwork, moved dirt around, they've made some improvements in the roads. It's got some beautiful views of Temple Bar and the lake. And I can see where this would be very attractive to have as a recreational area. But I have the same concerns as, as everyone else does in this room. How can we control what happens in the future if we grant this, this new, new zoning, which Supervisor Johnson pointed out is like taking a step backwards? My considerations when I went out to visit was solar, whether or not that would be something that would work in, in that area, because obviously electricity will probably never be in that area. And I think Supervisor Gold, I talked to you about air conditioning and whether or not it could run off from solar batteries and, and, you know, that's, that's a, that's a concern. I guess a water cooler could be ran or a big enough solar unit. But I, I too have concerns about the eight, nine miles between maintained county road and getting into these locations over the years. But on the other hand, I know that there's been thousands of lots sold already out in White Hills. And I don't know what the expectations of, of these buyers are, and it's really not my position to know that. But I see good and bad in this. And I think if you're just going to go out there and go camping, it'd be fun until it got hot, and then it'd be miserable, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Audrey Kenock.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing us to come before you today. My name is Audrey Kenock, and I'm a low-density rural recreational developer, and I focus in rural areas in the western part of the country. And I have many developments that I'm actively, actively selling, have sold out, and continuing to develop in Mojave County. I have brought today with myself is Kathy Tackett Hicks, who I'm sure you're all familiar with, Jed Noble is my engineer, and Jerry Sprecher, who helps us bring solar to our customers in our off-grid communities. This is a request to see if the Board of Supervisors would consider a new land use designation called rural recreational, which would allow for renewable energy options on a minimum 10-acre subdivision lot size. This is not a request to reduce subdivision improvements. It is a request for the county to consider whether the technology has advanced enough to the point that the use of solar and renewable power could replace the longstanding power line extension requirements. This provision is being proposed for rural recreational property with a minimum 10-acre lot-sized parcel that would be processed as a part of the subdivision rules and regulations of Mojave County. I have heard the county has historically complained about the Wildcat subdivisions throughout Mojave County. This alternative would provide a way to maintain county oversight while limiting the total number of unregulated lot splits which could be created as a result of the standard processes. Currently, I sell 36-acre sized lots with no oversight, and I do have many developments with them, and those future owners can request rezones to allow for five splits and no requirements for road improvements, drainage considerations, or lot layouts. The proposal before you today self-imposes a limit of three lots per each 36-acre area with county oversight and general road development standards. We believe this is something the county would be interested in. Over the last three years, I have sold close to 1,000 lots, with the majority of them being without power. Of these lots, of 1,000 lots, only 116 had electric brought to them. We have many customers wanting to be off-grid and escape the city life. With the way things are going in our country, we get more and more requests to be off-grid. I've never seen a more beautiful piece of property with expansive lake views 10 miles off of a paved road in the middle of nowhere that would be more ideal for this development. I have many other projects where I would not even consider this. This is just the right piece of property. We have been trying to get this answered for the last one and a half years to no avail. We had originally proposed a 189-five-acre lot subdivision, completed all 189 PERC tests, completed the preliminary plat hydrology reports and rezone applications. I worked with Unisource on surveying to come up with a projected job. Does that mean I'm out of time?
Which longer do you have?
I'm out of time.
Do you have a lot more to say?
Not much. I'll keep the script. So we, we really don't want to construct useless infrastructure. This is going to be a rural recreational community with limited homes being built. We feel that solar is an optimal option for this community. The, the ability to do that is there today. Benefits to the county would include the ability to maintain oversight through a subdivision process, limit the unregulated Wildcat subdivision splits, no reduction in rural improvements, only an agreement to do solar. We also have worked with Public Works to make sure that we would build the roads, and we would also maintain them ourselves through an HOA. The tax base would be obviously higher on 10-acre lots than over 36-acre lots. If you have any questions, I brought, you know, Kathy, Jed, and Jerry, or I can answer.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions here? Supervisor Bishop.
How many lots have you sold in the Greg's Hideout area before you started developing this one?
We have sold close to 900 lots in that area.
And how big are those lots?
Those are all one acres.
Do they have electricity?
No, they do not. And we also sell 40-acre lots out there also.
Okay, but that wasn't put together as a subdivision. You were just selling bare land?
Yes.
Okay, were they given any expectation of?
No, we fully disclose. I mean, when customers, we do a lot of advertising when customers call our office. We give them all of the information. No power, no water, no septic. We recommend water hall. And we clearly state that there is no electric. These are pre-existing subdivisions that I bought that were approved in the 60s. So, you know, but people want to get out of the city, as I stated earlier. They're not expecting power, and obviously, we would never sell anything and leave them to believe that there was going to be power. The closest power line to those lots is three miles away. And they're well aware of that when they buy.
Okay, so you're already selling these type lots?
Mm-hmm.
In this particular situation, you're wanting to get the county to approve a new zoning so that you can do a subdivision?
Where we would recommend solar as an option over electric. I, I, we're 10 miles off a paved road, so to bring electric eight miles down a road where the infrastructure's going to be put in and no one's going to use it, I mean, this is rural recreational. Do I think some people might build a primary residence? Possibly, but this is more for someone in Vegas or Los Angeles or Phoenix that's going to come out and recreate on the weekends, maybe put up a small cabin and go down to Lake Mead to enjoy it. But for a full-time, you know, I do have other developments that are a quarter mile off a paved road that, yes, that would be more primary. This will be, I don't foresee that happening out here.
Yeah, Audrey, I noticed that there was an old ranch house out there that does have a well. Do you have any idea how deep the water is in that area?
1,000 feet, approximately, yes.
And then I wonder how you will maintain the RS2477 roads between the county maintained road and this subdivision?
We would create an HOA, and obviously, if I had the ability to create more lots, the HOA would be able to, you know, collect more money, hopefully 20 to $25,000 a year. And we do this all over the country. I know that, you know, in our CCNRs, we could clearly state, I know somebody mentioned from the county that, you know, you would be concerned that the roads would be maintained or that they would call you up and say, hey, why aren't you maintaining these roads? But we clearly state that in our CCNRs, and we could also put a provision that would state the Board of Supervisors has the right to enforce them. We do that in other counties, and that works well. I mean, when people come out to view our property, you know, as you know, I have to do a public report. So in the public report, it clearly. So, in the public report, it clearly states all these things, what the dues are and what the dues are collected to provide for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Manager Hendricks, how does that work with the RS2477 roads as far as can a private party maintain a BLM road like that? Do you know?
I think you passed the resolution in 2016 that said if it accesses your private land, you're allowed to improve it to the ability so that you can access your property. You're not allowed to change it, but you can blade it and make sure that you are allowed access to your property.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, I would assume that for the access of the land and for the purposes of legal rights to access that, that the developer would be required to show some sort of a perfection of the right-of-way over the RS2477 roads. Just because we declare it doesn't mean that BLM recognizes it. So, I would think that so it wouldn't burden the county on having to go to court or having to do other things that we have done in the past to prove our right over the RS2477 roads. Some of that responsibility would be placed on the developer. Thank you.
Okay, so any questions? Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, guys. I would like to hear from the solar expert that's in the audience.
You would? Okay. Solar guy?
Yeah, hi. Did you want me to give a general presentation or answer some questions?
Actually, could we get your name for the record?
Okay, Jerry Sprecker.
Okay, Jerry, can you tell us how solar would work in a development like this?
Sure, absolutely. There's, very quickly, there's two things that need to be accomplished in order to provide the electricity. Number one is the amount of electricity you need. So, solar regenerated, it would be stored in batteries. So, that's the amount. Then the second is, how fast do you use it? And that's a device called an inverter that transfers the battery power or the solar power so that you can use it in things like air conditioners, which came up earlier. So, many people who live off-grid have a small energy budget. They can get a small system and get by very inexpensively. Other people want to have greater types of facilities, like larger air conditioning. So, they would need a larger system. But this is not new technology. This has been around for quite a while. People that have the financial budget for it can have systems large enough to live exactly like they do in a city, use electricity anytime they want. Most people who live off-grid don't do that. Most people who live off-grid want an energy budget. They want to have a much lower system, a much lower energy footprint. And therefore, they install inexpensive type of solar system. We have provided even under $5,000 for an AC-type of system, and even less expensive than that for a DC direct-current type of system. I won't get technical with you, but it's very affordable, very feasible. And it can happen so much more quickly than waiting for months, maybe years, for an electrical service to be extended a distance like eight miles.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Madam Chairman. Sir, what would you expect residential-sized solar system with the ability to run central air conditioning in our climate here to cost?
Central air conditioning, it depends, of course, on the size of the unit, two-ton, three-ton, four-ton type of thing. But I would say you're looking at something in the high teens, 17, 18, 19 type of thousands of dollars to do it. And it's a type of system where the ones we provide, for example, one of the options is that they are trailer-based. And so, you don't have the added expense of installation. You don't have to abandon the asset when you move the property, that type of thing. So, I would, short answer is, high teens. If you really want to, we're dealing with a lady now who wants to have not only central air conditioner, but run her microwave and her toaster and her hair dryer. That's going to be over $20,000.
So, sir, you're saying that, could that system run the air conditioning at night?
Absolutely. And that is, the energy during the day from the sun, through the solar panels, is stored in the battery. Then at night, the energy comes out of the batteries through the inverter, and it becomes the AC or the household typical current. And yes, it runs the air conditioning at night.
Madam Chairman, sir, I hold the Air Conditioning Contractors License from the great state of Arizona. I also hold a solar license from the great state of Arizona.
Oh, congratulations.
I live off-grid.
Awesome.
I'm going to hire you to come out and put a $17,000 system that'll run central air conditioning in my house 24 hours a day. Because I think the price tag that you applied is pretty low.
Well, I can do that.
About $50,000. And it's not a reflection on the project, because I really don't care. But I think you're setting a rather low price tag on that.
I think the, one thing you pointed out is exactly correct.
I have $2,000 in batteries that won't run, barely run my house through the night.
$2,000 in batteries is pretty small. That's a pretty small battery bank. Running the air conditioning is one thing. Running it 24 hours a day is different. Just as you live in the city, if you run your air conditioning and you crank it down where it's very cold, your electric bill goes up tremendously. So, again, it's about energy management. Can you overuse the system? Absolutely. But we do have people with air conditioning off-grid. And we can talk more details about it, but the price depends on how much you need.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to the agenda item. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion as soon as I find it.
Chairman Angus, I just want to make one final comment. I don't know if technology is where it needs to be to make this successful. And I'm not sure about spot zoning in just this area or whether or not it will have the effect of all of Mojave County and cause us more problems than what we might expect. But I think the sheriff's office may have a hard time getting out there to patrol because of its isolated nature. And I think that solar batteries might sound attractive to some people as a means of income as far as going out and helping yourself, because obviously, these are not going to be homes that are lived in all the time. They're going to be recreation homes, so they'll be vacant a lot of the times during the summer. And I don't know, I've got some concerns. I don't dislike the idea at all, but yeah, very hesitant here.
Okay. So, no?
Madam Chairman.
Yes?
I move that item 36 be adopted.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Okay, let's do a roll call.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I'll give it a try.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
I'm going to say no, sorry.
Supervisor Gould?
Aye.
And Chairman Angus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, 37. It's brought to us by Public Works. Sitting as Board of Directors of the Horizon Six Improvement District, discussion of possible action to direct staff to negotiate new intergovernmental agreements between the City of Lake Havasu City and Horizon Six Improvement District for Water Services and Fire Protection Services. This is 37. I do have somebody signed up to talk. Let's hear from them first. Mary?
Thank you, Chairman Angus, the board, and staff. I was here to speak on the previous item. But when I looked at the agenda, I saw you're talking about Horizon Six again. And so, I thought, yeah, for sure. I'm saying we have to approve it. But I brought my water bill so that people just realize that we, as Horizon Six, have paid for the water lines to begin with, and then also the blacktop. And we pay on every water bill. I have the $5.50 for the fire protection, $5.75 for future maintenance, and then pneumatic system, $2. And for the electric and maintenance, $25.88. So, every person who has a water meter out there does pay to maintain it and keep it up. Eventually, they're going to have to replace water lines or something. And then again, that's a major, major expense. And I think someday, it has to be all the property owners, again, to pay for that. Right now, it's on the backs of the water meters only, the people who have water meters. So, I just wanted to say that little input.
Thank you.
And yes, it definitely needs to be approved to work with the city. Because we pay out-of-district water costs on top of that, so. And we love the protection we have from the fire department and everything. So, yes, I hope you do approve it.
Very good. Anyone have any questions for Mary? Thank you. Okay, anyone want discussion? You want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Johnson?
Motion to approve, one. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Item 38. Discussion of Possible Action: Staff Recommendation on Location Development Opinion of Cost of Building: A Regional Sheriff Substation, Medical Examiner's Office, and Animal Control Facility in the vicinity of I-40 and Exit 9. Who's here to talk about this? Steve. Lotosky.
Chairman Angus, members of the board, as directed by, the board at their March 4 meeting, staff has returned and is here to present an opinion of cost on developing a campus complex, if you will, consisting of the sheriff's substation, animal control, and medical examiner's office. Very briefly, staff opinions, total design, construction, and ancillary costs toward a development of a 29,000-square-foot sheriff's office complex with medical examiner's office and animal control facilities would total approximately $9.78 million. A brief summary. And staff does recommend that this complex be sited at the I-40, Exit 13, or otherwise known as the Franconia Traffic Interchange. Staff recommends substation complex siting at this location given immediate Interstate 40 access and high visibility. And careful examination of candidate sites from I-40, Exit 13, the Franconia Interchange, all the way to Exit 2, which is the Needle Mountain Traffic Interchange. Staff recommends this siting on the premise that BLM currently administers a parcel, which is in the immediate northwest quadrant of that traffic interchange. The parcel is approximately 8.8 acres. And the acquisition can be affected by two means. One, the county, through its Board of Directors, or supervisors, I'm sorry, may direct staff to apply for a recreation and public purposes lease through a BLM, which is the same type of lease that the county has for Section 20 in Bullhead City, where the city complexes are located. The other means of acquisition would be by land exchange with the Bureau of Land Management. With regard to site design, the site would require a water well serving the entire complex, would require onsite wastewater disposal through a septic system, as well as separate parking for public and employee vehicles, and secure sheriff's vehicle parking that would be also parking areas for the sheriff's offices watercraft, as well as an outdoor evidence storage lot. With regard to the facilities, there are three facilities, three buildings total being contemplated. Staff recommends an 18,000-square-foot building housing both the sheriff's office at approximately 6,000 square feet and the medical examiner's office, I'm sorry, medical examiner's office at 6,000 square feet, and the sheriff's substation at 12,000 square feet. As well as with the animal control facility consisting of two separate metal buildings totaling 11,000 square feet, the larger building at about 7,500 square feet would house animal control administrative and business offices, storage and larger quantity of dog and cat kennels. The smaller building at 3,500 square feet would house incoming processing and isolation kennels, medical procedure rooms, and facility support and storage rooms. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, I do have a question, Mr. Lotosky. Operation and maintenance of these buildings on a yearly basis, because the morgue and the animal control unit would need a great deal of refrigeration, and also the housing for the sheriffs. I'm just wondering if there's been any estimation of the cost of upkeep and maintenance long-term?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Watson, that is a very good question. Staff has not estimated the overall cost of operation, annual operation, maintenance of the facilities.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Supervisor Gould? No questions?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We probably, this gives a good overview of building a building, but it isn't really a plan. Because I've got a couple of concerns. If, does, we need a plan for this. One, we need to, how are we going to pay for this? Two, this is in my district. And if it involves closing the Havasu Substation and the Mojave Valley Substation, and moving, in the case of Mojave Valley, the substation 30 miles away from my constituents, I don't know that that's a good idea. And I don't know that my constituents would view that as a good idea. So, the building portion of this is fine, but I think we need to come up with a plan, a funding plan and an operational plan. And somebody needs to convince me that this is a worthwhile investment of the money and that somehow, this is going to make operations smoother than what they are now. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
Well, the, obviously, the only way we have to pay for it would be with an extension of the quarter cent sales tax. And with the extension of the quarter cent sales tax and the numbers that have been presented to us by staff, we would have to scrub the animal control. So, that part would be out. As far as, yes, it would, 1022, the Lake Havasu Substation and the Mojave Valley Substation, both of which are in great need of updating. The way law enforcement is going, it's going to regional policing, because this would save us because of the brass that, lieutenants and above, that need to run each substation. Now, you could have an economy of scale with one set of brass running a substation. And like people always told me, that the police is not supposed to be in the station. They're supposed to be out in the field. So, they're getting the same level of service that they had before for a smaller amount of tax dollars. I don't think it would, while people might like to have a building there, the building doesn't really provide you the security. It's the officers in the field, which would free up more dollars to maybe, you know, help with the officers in the field. But I think the new design that we have, the new facility that we have for the sheriffs to hold their equipment at, their boats, and all the rest of the things that they need, the coroner's office being there, I think the economy of scale is going to save us a lot of money. I think to answer one of the questions Supervisor Watson had, right now, which is something the board would have to discuss, the coroner's, a private coroner, so he pays, we pay him money, and he pays for his own electricity and everything. And the building he's in, I'm guessing this would probably save you money on that. But, you know, if that's something you want to bring in-house, you know, which would save a lot, save us some money, but that's up to a discussion. I don't know if I answered the question Supervisor Gould or not. I think the location makes it good for people to respond from all areas to service the constituents. I don't think they would lose anything, you know, because how many people go to the substations anyway?
Okay. Supervisor Bishop? Want to say something?
Yeah, this is the first I've heard of scrapping the animal shelter as part of this overall project. And you say, Supervisor Johnson, that's because of the money. So, my next question, obviously, would be, is there enough money to where we could improve the shelter in Kingman with the same quarter cent sales tax? Is there enough to go? Is, is there enough to, to go forward with, with that? And that's, that's my big concern now. I was very supportive of, of the entire project, but disappointed in hearing about the animal shelter.
Well, with the numbers that, that are coming in of nine and three-quarters million dollars, and Lord knows they never come in on budget anyway, so I figure $10 million, I think we can do the sheriff and the substation for around $6 million. The, the animal control costs a little bit more money, and the water needs, which somebody was asking about the air conditioning, it's mostly water cooling that goes through that. But the water needs of that is, is, is a lot bigger, so we can size down the well on that. We only pull in about $6 million on the quarter cent sales tax, and our elections is, are up at a year, so we don't have the money. Now, we could do it, because I'm understanding there's additional money coming in from the budget this year, but that would be up to a board decision if they wanted to put the money into that. I mean, I'm still in support of the animal facility, but I think we really need the coroner's office and the sheriff's substation first. If we had to cut one, that'd be the one I would cut to do it now.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm, I'm in total support of the regional sheriff's substation down there.
I think we have the sheriff hanging out there waiting to say something. Come on down.
Maybe he can save the day and tell us how to do it.
It's cold in here.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Just wanted to voice my opinion on the complex. As you're all aware, we've been working diligently on a strategic plan that encompasses several areas of concern that need to be addressed in the upcoming future. One of those issues is facilities. I'm sure you have been down to the Lake Havasu Substation and the Mojave Valley Substation. They're atrocious. These are beyond reasonable as far as condition. We have significant need for replacement. So I do understand that a joint multi-area or a multi-location facility is a cost savings, as Supervisor Johnson had mentioned, because in reality, we do need two new substations, one in Lake Havasu and one in Fort Mojave. So as far as the operation, we got, we were talking operationally, Supervisor Johnson's 100% correct. Our deputy sheriffs work in the field. This would be more of an administrative complex where they come to do their reports if there's time permitting, but moreover, to book their evidence, and that's where the administrative task would go from. The deputies now, their, their vehicles are their offices. They do everything in the field. So if this were to come to pass, we would probably merge the Lake Havasu District and the Mojave Valley District into one river district to provide better coverage for the entire area. So I do see it as a positive, but my position is focused on getting substations for those two areas, so we can make this work. But if we had one individual substation for Lake Havasu and, and Mojave Valley, that would work as well.
Any questions?
The only question I have, do you agree that by building a bigger lot for vehicles and boats and stuff, that would help too, from where, what you have now?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Question? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the morgue, because we've been talking about the morgue since the day I sat down here. And, you know, it was told to me, there's just, we just don't have the number of cases. That's why we contract out. Has that changed over the years? Are we seeing a, a bigger amount of cases that the morgue takes care of, our coroner?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to, Yvonne Orr manages that, that, but, and I'd like to have her come up there and address your, your question, but, you know, I, I would like to state prior to, to her weighing in on that, that, you know, last, when the contract, when the last ME, medical examiner declined to, to proceed with the contract, we had one medical examiner propose on that contract, and the cost went up substantially, and there was quite a bit of negotiation. But if that hadn't happened, Mojave County would have been in some difficulty, and significant difficulty, in my opinion. Currently, if something happened to our ME, Mojave County's only fallback position is a memo of understanding with Coconino County, and that's not a good solution. You know, it begs the question that is sometimes controlling our own destiny the best path to go, you know. What Supervisor Johnson referred to is that some future date, maybe sooner than later, Mojave County may take those ME services internally, and that would be a decision by the board. But to do that, we would certainly need a facility. And it's also my understanding, the facility that the ME is, is working in is, is somewhat inadequate, where originally, we were looking at 4,000 square foot, and I believe because of the input that the ME provided to Supervisor Johnson, if I'm not mistaken, we upped that square footage to 6,000 square foot. And also Supervisor Johnson, in one of the articles I read very astutely, said that we could provide some of the services to other, other counties, others, others in similar, you know, I'm not sure, you know, that hasn't been explored, but certainly if we have a, a top-notch facility for medical examiner, you know, we can provide some services and probably out.
Okay. But you didn't answer my question.
And that's why we have Yvonne.
Okay. But is it, just so I'm clear, is it the same facility that, or have they moved?
They're renting the same facility.
Same facility?
Yes.
Down there in that industrial park? Okay.
Good morning, Chairman Angus, members of the board. Currently, we pay the medical examiner, examiner a flat fee, 12 payment, 12 equal payments, and with that, they provide their own office space, all the staffing, all overhead required, as well as the conducting of investigation, death scene investigations and autopsies. We do see those routinely climb, I'm gonna, I wasn't prepared, so it didn't bring down numbers for me, but five to eight percent annually, they are increasing. I anticipate, well, while we're firm for this year, because last year we negotiated two-year contract, but I anticipate seeing that cost continually growing. I believe when OMB did a study previously, that they found to, to bring that operation in-house, that it would be in the neighborhood of $1 to $1.2 million. I believe my annual payment right now is $675,000, and they're responsible for all overhead.
Right. And the liability and everything?
Cars?
Yes.
Everything like that.
But again, has the number, I mean, because it's a very limited scope of the types, they don't see everybody who dies, so I'm asking, is it, has the numbers gone up over the years?
I can provide updated figures, but I estimate a five to eight percent climb with baby boomers, we're seeing a large increase. And they do do death scene investigations, they do have part-time employees in every community. So they are there on most. The, the exception would be if someone is under the care of a medical doctor and in, let's say, poor, poor health, then those would be quick death scene investigations. Autopsies are only, it's, it's a judgment call with the medical examiner on whether an autopsy is going to be conducted.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions, Prema?
I have a question. Going back in history, we used to have, when we contracted out, we contracted for a certain amount of, of autopsies. And so the coroner picked and chose. You could say, hey, it looks like somebody was, you know, in the layman's eyes, we have a problem here. And I know one that we refer, they said, hey, I only do whatever X amount, I'm not doing this one. So you didn't do it. So now we've got a system where it works better, but Ms. Orr was mentioning that she, the coroner has to go to every scene unless the doctor will sign off, but we've had problems, I don't know if it's all the areas, but especially in the Lake Havasu area, where the doctors are refusing to sign off, even though they've been treating somebody for diabetes or cancer or whatever else, they don't want to sign the death certificate. So now our coroner has to, has to request all the medical records and then read all of them, just to make sure there isn't something wrong. My guess is they're lazy, but, you know, I, I think we should be charging them for it. And I brought it up in the past, that the coroner should, should look at, that we should not allow that to be done, but.
Or they're charged.
But I think the numbers are getting pretty high with them.
Okay.
And, and I've got to say that the ME has been very, has a good reputation with everybody around. And, and a lot of the, the scanning and stuff, the screenings are being sent out even by Maricopa now, nobody's wanting to really do the, that, that kind of work in-house. But now would be the time, if we were going to decide, to maybe look at bringing somebody in, when you've got a brand-new building and you can bring somebody in to say, hey, this, this is your baby, so.
Okay.
I have a question for Supervisor Johnson. Madam Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
Did you make any contact with La Paz County?
Not this time, but I have in the past, and, and they were all, they were very interested in using, using us, and so was, other counties were too. But now, is it Coconino just built a new facility, I believe? So we're looking at, we're, but I mentioned at the Public Works to get their plans for what they had done, and so, but there was a lot of counties that wanted to use us, because on the West Coast, it's hard to ship stuff into Maricopa. So there still would be options available for other counties to use us.
Would it be possible for San Bernardino County to be involved in that? You know, the eastern side?
I guess with a permit, I don't know how, the guy would have to be okayed to be, to testify would be the biggest thing.
I guess what I'm thinking is kind of a region.
Right. I hadn't looked at San Bernardino before, but there was interest from all the counties at that time, Coconino and everybody, and even because of the wait time people were having sending stuff to Maricopa, because obviously it went to the back of the list, other counties, even Yavapai was looking at saying, well, you know, maybe we could send stuff over too.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, somebody want to take a stab at this?
Before we start, I got a question for the attorney. Mr. Esplin, is this going to be a tax extension vote that will require a unanimous vote of the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, so we have right now a quarter cent sales tax, and the law's very clear, in order to extend or do a new one, you have to have unanimous, unanimous vote. So there will, there will be required a unanimous vote if we're going to use, if, if we're going, if we're going to extend the sales tax. Or, there's another little wrinkle to this, is if you look back at the original resolution that was passed, in the, in the resolution, it identified what buildings could be built, and it specifically stated, the board then specifically stated that if they wanted to make any changes to what the, what buildings would be built, they would also need to have a unanimous five vote to do that. So a couple of different ways you can do this. You could either extend the quarter cent sales tax and amend the resolution to include the, the coroner and the animal control facility, because those two were not on the list, or you could do a new quarter cent sales tax after the first one expires. And either way, you're going to have to, you're going to need a five-person vote.
A follow-up question, has this been properly noticed, so the public knows this is a potential tax increase?
We're not, I don't anticipate you were going to vote on a tax today. I, I don't think it's been properly agendized for, for the supervisors today to vote on extending the quarter cent sales tax. I don't think that would be a proper vote today, if that's what you were asking.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
I think this issue was just information brought back from a request Supervisor Johnson made a couple of meetings ago. That's really all this is.
And I guess the question I have, this was for new facilities, and while it gave a general outline of new facilities, we have used that money for demolition of buildings also, if I'm correct. And I don't think that was, that was set forth. I think animal control would be considered a new facility that we need, if it was something we went ahead with. I don't know that we can amend that resolution, or that, I would not want to get into amending that resolution, because then that leaves it open for everybody after us of something we do to amend resolutions, just because we all agree. I guess the big question would be, I don't even know if we can ask it or not, but if, is an extension of a, of a sales tax something the board supports? If it's not, then there's no sense making a motion going forward.
Right. I think that's a discussion for another, another day, honestly.
Yeah, to make a final decision on whether to extend it or not, that would have to be properly agendized, and it's not properly agendized for today, at least.
So today, we're just talking about this staff recommendation. Can we just accept it? Accept the recommendation?
Well, let's see.
Acknowledge the recommendation?
Acknowledge it. You can acknowledge that.
We don't have to accept, we accept, not accepting or making a decision, we're just accepting the staff recommendation.
I, I think the word acknowledge would be the best word to use.
Okay.
Or to take no action on it.
Okay.
You know, you don't have to take action if you don't want to.
Okay.
Madam Chair, what you're going to need is, and maybe the clerk can clarify it or not, how many months ahead of time, if sales tax is to be extended, do we have to notify the state? They have a timeline, it's either three months or six months. Maybe three months, I believe.
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Johnson, I actually would have to defer to Coral Lloyd, as they usually do those postings for our budgeting process.
But I'm guessing it's a minimum of three months we have to give, because they just can't change it all the time.
And Madam Chairman, if I could, in addition to that question, it would be important to note, on the budget process, does that need to be, does a decision to move forward with quarter cent sales tax need to be included in, in the budget process, so that that monies can be, those monies can be spent? Madam Chairman, thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, and Supervisor Johnson. So the answer to that question is, the, the latest date that the sales tax could be extended is November 1st. So it needs to be 60 days prior to the action, plus the month that you're in. So if it was, the latest really would be for your board action in October, preferably sooner, because leading into Manager Hendrick's question, if we were to move forward with any type of construction, yes, we would need to include that within the budget. Otherwise, you would be approving a funding source without allowing us to move forward with any construction.
Question? Any questions? Thank you.
If I could just add, going back to discussion, what to do, I, I want to give the board as much flexibility as possible. I would, if, if you don't want to make any action right now, don't take any action. I don't want anybody to construe this as if, you know, you vote, and we acknowledge this, saying, then we have to do this, and we have to do what was said. I, I'd say if you're, if you're on the fence or anything, just take no action on it, and then somebody can bring back an item later and whatnot.
Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion on this, or can we just say no action to be taken? No action taken?
Unless somebody wants to specifically say, yeah, I want to do this.
No, I'm just saying, can I just say that, or do I have to make that into a motion?
No.
Okay. All right.
I'll defer to Supervisor Gould and Supervisor Johnson, it's in their area, so.
Yeah. Yeah, well, just no action. It's just, to me, it was just information.
Well, I'll make a motion to at least accept it, because if there's no interest, there's no sense bringing it back. I mean, might as well just kill it down, keep it on down the road, I don't care.
I don't, I don't think, I don't get that.
I don't think that was what it was going to do, but if you, if you recommended acknowledge, that was the word that you wanted.
At least something, I'm not, I'm not getting a real loving feeling here.
No.
I, I don't think we were prepared to talk about that end of it.
I just don't want, I don't, I don't want you to construe, as long as, I just don't recommend you say, well, we, we accept this, and so therefore, somebody's going to take action on it. I just, that's what I want to avoid. So that's why I say take no action, but somebody can bring it back later and, and stuff, I don't see that.
Well, I, I think we all know that it's going to have to have a funding source, it's either going to be a sales tax, or we're saying in the budget, fine $6 million, so.
What would you like to do, Supervisor Johnson?
Well, I'd at least like to acknowledge it, we received the report, it shows we're kind of interested. If we're not interested, then.
Okay, make that motion.
Vote against it, and I don't care.
Make the motion.
Make a motion to accept the information from Public Works regarding item number...
38.
38.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have four to one. Supervisor Gould voted no. All right, I've been, had a request that we take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and finish this up. come back and finish this up. Thank you. On this meeting, back to order, please have a seat. Yeah. We are now on Agenda Item 39, and I brought this forward. Sitting is the Board of Directors of the Mojave County Television Improvement District, discussion of possible action to review a request from TV2 KLBC Laughlin to be allowed space on the television district system to rebroadcast their programming. Before I bring Ivana Ohr up, who has done an incredible job working on this, because we have been talking about this pretty, well, we've been talking about the TV district and the possibility of putting local broadcasters on the system, pretty much since the day I sat on the seat. And there's been a lot of things that had to be taken care of and looked at, legal issues, and we had recently a restructuring with the FCC, and, but Ivana and the administration really worked hard to see if there was any possible way. The way I look at it, again, everyone knows that I didn't like the TV district, I don't think this government should be in that business, but apparently, it is something that actually, of all the things we do, our constituents actually really like. And they're willing to pay the few cents on their bill for it. So how I then changed my outlook was, if we're going to do it, then let's make it the best we can possibly make it. And having local programming, you know, right now, stations out of Phoenix and Vegas, they play, and they're good channels, and people are happy, but they run their commercials here, and they don't pay anything to us. You know, we talked about the possibility at one time of maybe making it an enterprise from making it support itself and taking it away as a tax, and at some point, I would like to revisit that again. But, right now, we're talking about putting some local programming on our airways, so if Ivana can come up and... Would you want to go first, or would you like Bruce Clark to make his case? Okay, so, Bruce, come on up and tell us what you want to do, what you're asking.
Madam Chair and Supervisors, thank you very much for allowing me the time. My, my name is Bruce Clark. My address, Post Office Box 29520, Laughlin, Nevada, 35-year resident there. Although, most of my time seems to be spent in Bullhead City. Might I give just a brief synopsis? TV2 has been on the air for 30 years. Just celebrated our 30th anniversary last month. To set everyone's mind at ease, TV2, even though it is not a broadcast station, in that 30 years has followed the FCC regulations right down the bike, and has never had one complaint, not one, on anything that we have done. We're 24-hour programming on our channel. We have done over 5,500 morning shows in the last 27 years. That would mean that we have probably done over 4,000 guests, many of which have been mayors, politicians, governors, supervisors. We try and get around the community as much as we possibly can, and we've been successful at it. And it's not just locally, it's everywhere. We produce, actually, out of that television station, four shows. The morning show, which is a Monday through Friday show, which has held a little bit of everything, ended up to and including news at least twice a week now. We have tri-state on patrol, which is we go to different agencies, up to and including Mojave County Sheriff's Department, ride with them, and do a half-hour program on that, which has been beneficial, according to the sheriff and all the police departments we were with, that the people get to see these policemen or people too. Just start a brand-new show, it'll air actually Wednesday, it'll be the first time, called Tara Talks. My co-host on the morning show has put together a show that's going to deal with women and the changes that women have made in our communities. And of course, we have our religious show, Living Water Ministries, which airs every Sunday. We do all of the public service announcements we possibly can. We support, we support everything. It's just, it's what we do. We provide outlets for social services, charities, welfare agencies, sheriffs, mayors, police departments, it doesn't matter. Recently, the, there is an issue, I'm sure you're all aware, Suddenlink cable dropped TV2 off the cable system. I will tell you that it's unfortunate, the management change at...
It's okay, keep going.
The management change at the Suddenlink, and ownership change, has caused some problems because of communication that was in the past, and those people are no longer there to agree to what we had agreed to. So therefore, there is an issue at this point in time with that cable system, but it's nothing that can be overcome. And I'm looking forward to having that conclude. But in the meantime, I honestly believe that TV2 can put a television station up on your system that you all can be very proud of. It'd also provide people who don't have internet these meetings. I don't, I don't know if it's being broadcast anywhere at all now, other than on the internet. We have been surprised, we've pulled in 30, last week, 39,000 views, engagements on the internet. That's just on Facebook. YouTube has its own, we're also on Twitter, and we're also on Apple now. It's unbelievable, people went from cable to internet, and it's just, it's amazing. My question to you is, is it possible, we can, after three years of trying this, can possibly get on the television district for Mojave County? Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. And I have to correct you, it's been five years we've been trying.
That's right, okay. Time flies.
Okay, so Ivana, does anybody have any questions for, before we go? I'm sure you might have them after, but, okay.
Good morning, again. Madam Chair, Supervisors, specifically, what would you like me to address?
Well, go over, you know, the arrangement, the way that you figured out that we could make this happen.
Well, what we did is, WECOM released all of the technical data. WECOM is our subcontractor, who runs, essentially operates the television district for us, does our troubleshooting, installation, maintenance, things of that nature. They shared with our district engineer, Bob Dutrelle of Dutrelle Rackley, all of the specifics, and trying to find a way that we could insert TV2 into the system without removing one of the major broadcast stations, because those are very popular with your constituents. Working with, WECOM, working with Bob Dutrelle, they found a way that they can insert the system, essentially, somewhat as a sub-channel, and pardon me, I forgot to bring down one of the most critical pieces of papers I had pulled up on my phone, an email. And it's in your back, basically telling you the steps that would have to be taken, as well as the cost that would be incurred by TV2 in order to make this happen. It would require some commitments, both from WECOM, from TV2, and also from the county, to ensure that this would happen. There is only one area that I can say that I am concerned about. I've pushed WECOM to try and see if they could come up with an alternative solution. And basically, that is, it would be like your sixth bullet. Since the MUX box is responsible for MUXing FOX and TV2 together, FOX will now be dependent upon that MUX box always working. So, in my opinion, that leaves the TV district relying on their equipment to be always operational. So, that's really my own, only concern. As well as, to date, the television district has spent in excess of $12,000, $12,350 on legal expenses. These date back to 2000... These date back to 2014, when this question was first arise.
So I'm kind of confused about what you said. How would that be different than what it is now? You know, who, who's responsible? You said it has to be on all the time?
In WeCom's contract, they are responsible for 24-hour, seven-operation, with some, with some restricted limitations for outage time, things that you can't control, weather, loss of power, things of that nature. TV2 would have to give, in my opinion, in order to make this comfortable, TV2 would have to buy the equipment, give WeCom access to immediately pull it off the air, so that it doesn't interfere with our programming, with our rebroadcast of this station.
Okay. Has that been, has Channel 2 been notified of that?
No. The last time we met was in your office.
Right, that was a long time ago.
Right.
So there are just these changes, so, so that today, we would just sort of talk about the chance of going forward. You'd still have meetings, you'd still have to come up with stuff that would have to be agreed upon by all parties.
Correct. I do believe that Attorney Espeland and I could work out the majority of the contract. However, I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward unless we had DC Council review the FCC parameters and requirements. So he's not cheap. That would add more money to my legal bill that...
Right. You know, I do want to talk about that, but I don't think we're there quite yet about that legal bill. But are there any questions from anybody here?
Madam Chair, not so many questions, but the item that's placed on the agenda is to review a request and allow space in the television system to rebroadcast their programming. It seemed like we skipped the step of, first of all, that we want to add local programming to our TV station. This is not a TV station. I mean, they're just a home broadcasting thing. Should it be opened up if we want to, to, you know, say, okay, this is something that the county has decided we have a need for, so we're putting out to bid anybody who would like to, you know, make themselves available of our one channel that we might have, available I have never had anybody ever call me asking for any local programming to be on the TV district. They call for, the biggest request is for C-SPAN. I don't really have anybody for local, so I don't know that, you know, I don't, I could not support going ahead with getting a contract for somebody when we haven't really looked at the other possibilities yet, or, you know, that's my biggest source. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes. Yes. I have a few things that I'd like to say or ask. This $12,350 in legal fees, we've been footing the bill on that so far. Is that something that's shared with, with someone that wants to come in because of the work we're doing to try to enable that? Do we get reimbursed for any of these fees, I guess is my question?
Supervisor Bishop, at this time, we have not.
Is that something that we can ask for? I guess you can ask for anything, but I mean, it just seems like we're putting out a lot of expense for something that we're not even sure we even want.
If staff is directed to move that direction, I would certainly request to include that in any final documents, as well as any additional costs that would be, excuse me, that would, that we would incur.
Okay. And then if, if this equipment that TV2 would put on, we're dependent on that working, and it's their, their muck, or whatever you call it, so how, how would that work? How would we make a repair if TV2 wasn't responsive enough?
Well, I believe the best approach might be to include WeCom as a third party in there that would require, that would give them access at any time. I, if we move forward to a final document, my recommendation would be that any, if they cause any interference, that we have authorization to pull them off the air immediately, as the failure of their equipment should not impact the service that we provide to constituents of Mojave County.
Okay. And then the programming that we rebroadcast, that's, that's professional programming, and we're considering, the way I understand it, letting a kind of a, excuse me, Bruce, some, a substandard broadcast.
Oh, come on.
As opposed to what our constituents are used to seeing. I knew that would, that would come out wrong, Bruce, I'm sorry. But it is kind of a, kind of a little homegrown channel here, as opposed to Fox and CBS and NBC.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, I did bring along a schedule that I printed off of the website. I'm not certain if it's current. Is your website current, what you're broadcasting?
Yes.
Mine is to deal with facts and not to make an opinion on the quality of the broadcast.
Sure.
I did pull a copy of that from their webpage.
Do you have any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Are you done?
I'm done, for now.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ivana, can we split other channels, so to speak, to add more programming? Or is this the only available channel that we can, I don't know if splitting the frequencies is even the right term, but...
It's, it's a very odd thing. There used to be sub-channels available for each major network, but they're all choosing to use their own. I've asked WeCom to come here, because that's in the technical realm, and I'd ask Jack to address that.
My name's Jack Trahan with WeCom Incorporated. I don't really know what the question is to me, but I think I do, so I'll try to answer it, the best that I can. The county has several television licenses. In the new digital world, there are several channels on each one of those licenses now. For instance, you have, say, Channel 10, and you have sub-channels with that channel that comes along with it. What the county can do is to take one of those sub-channels and to replace the programming that's on it, or to create a new one, if it'll fit, if the bandwidth is wide enough, to include Channel 2. Now, it wouldn't come under, when people scan their TVs now, they see on the TV, they'll see like 10 dot 1 or 10 dot 2. That's Channel 10 with the primary carrier and a secondary subcarrier. What they would see if Channel 2 goes on there would be not 10 dot 2 or anything, it would be 2 dot 1 or whatever would come up on the television. The way that the codes in the TVs are now, they're not so much channel-specific, FCC channel-specific, as they are broadcast-specific. So that's, I hope you can understand that. I don't want to get too technical, because you really won't understand it.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Trahan, so do we have more capacity to add additional local programming to our network?
I believe they, I believe you do, but I'm not going to say yes at this time, without doing some research, to be sure.
Okay.
So there are some technical issues that have to be worked out. We've already looked at this TV2 thing, oh, a year or two ago, and found out that we could do that. But we need to revisit, because I know there could be other things happen in the future that need an answer, and we need to find the answer to that, for you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Is that all?
I think Supervisor Watson wants to ask you a question.
Thank you, Mr. Trahan. I have a question for you. I've got a remark for the Chairman. With the remarks from Mr. Trahan, it appears that we need to do some further research. So it would be wise, I think, possibly, to table it for another two weeks, or bring it back when we have that information.
Can we make it more, if we're going to do that, can we make it a little bit more specific? Like, if you can come back in two weeks with a plan that we can take action on, or not take action on, so we're not just keep kicking this down the road?
So the typical practice is, if we continue an item, we continue it with the exact language that we have here today. So if you want to do something different, you would have to bring a new agenda item. So we would continue it, but then bring a new agenda item, or not take any action?
So if I just, if I don't take action, this, and then we put in another agenda item, we write another different agenda item that we can act on that is more appropriate than this?
We could do that. I would defer to the Clerk of the Board. Would you also agree that that'd be a good practice?
Okay. But before we table it, I have a question for Ivana. So just to refresh everyone's memory, this, this is a taxing district. It's an independent taxing district. Everybody pays, whether it's a couple of cents, everyone loves to say it's a couple of cents, but if you own a million-dollar building, it's more than a couple of cents. And, and then stations broadcast their, their commercials on, and we don't get anything for it. It really is a public, it really is kind of a public station that we run. We're one of the few, we might be the only county who runs it. You know, we can debate whether, again, that is something that we should be doing, but we are doing it. So my question to you is, when you have taxing districts that you have questions on, whether it be improvement districts, or flood, and when you have to get legal opinions, does the taxing district pay those bills, or do you charge them back to, you know, if it's the Golden Valley? I mean, how is that gets, get sucked up? It's the only way I could...
I believe the way that finance labels that is central service charges. You'll see that appear in, in the budget, and that pays for your treasurer assessor, your legal fees. Now, as far as our legal fees are concerned, they can help us with general, excuse me, general issues. However, because our DC Council has relationships with the FCC, they can call them, they can speak to them, they can clarify things, we have additional legal fees. Most times, we would try to address those at the local level, if at all possible. And can I make one other statement?
Yes.
This might be a little bit out of line. Can I ask for the first meeting in May, simply because of my 30th wedding anniversary on the 14th, and I'm going to be out of town, so two weeks will be...
Absolutely. And, you know, and while we're at it, I wanted to thank you, I mean, again, we've been working on this for years, and, you know, I know it's been tough, and you've had to do a lot of work, and I just really appreciate it. We've got a great staff, honestly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to say anything else, Bruce?
Yes, I would, for a moment, thank you. Insofar, if you're worried about access to the facility, WeCom now has access to it, our facility right there in Laughlin. They can come anytime they want, all their racks are in one place, their dishes in another right there on the side of the building, so there's no problem with maintenance or any tune-ups on that at all. And Supervisor Bishop, I prefer to call it local, not substandard, if you don't mind. We try very, very hard, and I don't think that, that thousands, the tens of thousands of people, a half a million people a year that watch it, that we know of, believe it to be substandard. It provides a service to the community, and we, we know we're not NBC, we know we're not ABC. We're a local television station, just trying to do something for the community. So thank you very much for your time, I certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wish you all the best, and I look forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Okay. So we're, we're not going to take any action on this one either. And then I'll make sure to put together the new agenda item that could really, you know, allow us to talk freely and, and come up with something, if we choose to, okay? Item 40, from Gary Watson, District 1, "Discussion of Possible Action: Approve a New Lease Agreement with the Mojave County Fair Association for a Period of 10 Years, with One Five-Year Option to Renew."
Thank you, Chairman Angus. I bring this to you again today for the possible approval of the new lease for the Mojave County Fairgrounds Association. As at this point, I'm amenable to changing the terms to one year, if that's necessary. If we have board members that are curious as to why I'm willing to do one year, it is to provide the association with enough time to prove that their, their new board and their new manager, time to demonstrate their ability to increase the revenues and increase the visibility and enhancement of the facility. So with that, I'm just open for discussion.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions? Supervisor Bishop? Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I think we probably should go forward with the one-year option. I think that needed unanimous vote at this point, and I believe the only way you're going to get a unanimous vote is to go with the one-year option.
And that's what I would propose. Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the approval.
I'm sorry, if I could interject before, there was just one housekeeping item that if I could make, Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just looking at the backup on the lease agreement. It has the lease agreement, and identifies in Exhibit A. Exhibit A is the legal description of the fairgrounds. It was not in the backup. I've got it, so I'll include that on there when we submit it out there, to have the signatures of the parties, of the association and, and the Chairman here, so I've got that.
Okay. You okay with that?
Yes, certainly. Make a motion to approve a new lease with Mojave County Fairgrounds, Fairgrounds Association for a period of one year, for the purposes of conducting recreational, entertainment, artistic, cultural, educational, and/or convention activities, including the annual county fair, which is only six months away, at the Mojave County Fairgrounds in Kingman, and authorize the Chairman to sign a new lease agreement.
Okay. Second. Second. Can we take a roll call, please? Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Onto 41, "Discussion of Possible Action: Approve an Appraisal of Those Mojave County Fairgrounds to Determine Its Fair Rental Value."
Madam Chairman, item number 41 now is moot.
Okay.
So we can move on to item 42.
No action? 42, "Discussion of Possible Action: Approve Mojave County Fairgrounds Association's Purchase of Mojave County Public Works Vehicles." Chairman Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Angus. We bring this to you for the possibility of the Fairgrounds Association to purchase a very-used 2006 F-350 for the value of $3,090. This would require a unanimous vote. The Fairgrounds Association is in need of a new utility vehicle, and this item would fit quite well in their needs. So with that, I'll make a motion for the approval of the purchase from Mojave County Public Works Vehicle Number 2681, for fair market value of $3,090, by the Mojave County Fairgrounds Association.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay, we're the one.
What? Excuse me. I was under the incident, it has to be unanimous, so it does not carry with a no vote.
Oh, for these, for these vehicles?
For this item in particular, I believe.
Oh.
It has to be unanimous vote for it to carry.
Okay.
So, question. The purchase is for the fair market value. If the fair market value is $3,090...
Yeah, so 11251, Section 5, you have to have a fair market value and, and do it by public auction. That's the component. If, if it's not unanimous, then it has, then you have to do a public auction. The unanimous avoids the public auction part of it.
Okay. Even though it were, it's listed at fair... Okay, even though it's listed at fair market value?
That's correct.
Answer is my question.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
It actually says, "Average Kelley Blue Book Suggested Trade-In Value." I don't know that that's fair market value. This is also a diesel, Ford diesel pickup. I have a 2,000 Ford diesel pickup that's worth $12,000, so...
How many miles?
Do we normally go off of the trade-in value or do we go off of something else?
I don't know how often we do this. It's a pretty rare thing, but...
That was my question, Madam Chair, before you guys tried to get your vote going so quick, that we had the, sell the private party was 3465 to 6,000 and then like Supervisor Gould said, with options, it could be a lot higher than that. I didn't see a, when they put in unanimous, then I figured we were going lower than what the appraisal price was and that was my concern. It's like, I don't mind letting them have it ahead of time if they're paying fair market value, but if they're going less than fair market value, I have a little problem. Because we are replacing our vehicles with that money.
Right. So, could we bring it back for...
On a reconsideration motion, if somebody wishes to do a reconsideration.
Motion to reconsider?
Yes. Now, we're in the same...
Wait, I thought, wait, wait, I thought motions to reconsider can only be brought back by the winning...
That's correct. At the same meeting. We're at the same meeting.
Right.
So we're at the same meeting. And in this one, it didn't pass because you need unanimity, you need five. So I think it would be Supervisor Johnson that could do the reconsideration at this meeting.
I concur.
Right. And we'll leave it at that, okay?
Yeah, I can bring it back.
You can bring, yeah. Maybe there's some more parameters that you can do or, you know, it just doesn't sound like it was done quite, quite right.
Aye.
Okay. So now we are on to item 43. Discussion, possible action, approve the memorandum of agreement between the Big Sandy Natural Resource Conservation District and Mojave County.
Thank you, Chairman Angus. I bring this item to you. It's just a memorandum of agreement between Big Sandy and Mojave County. There'll be no requirement for expending any dollars from the general fund. This is just a cooperative agreement in order to basically apply for other grants and cooperation with the NRCD, the National Conservation Districts. And if there's any, any further questions, I could probably answer them.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for doing my job. But I did call you Chairman Watson before, so we're even. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 44, discussion, possible action, authorize the Department Services Director to submit comments on behalf of Mojave County using the preferred electronic submittal procedure as described in the Federal Register under the revised definition of orders of the United States. Tim?
Chairman Angus, members of the board, this item, the Army Corps of Engineers along with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has published for public comment a proposed rule defining the scope of the waters federally regulated under the Clean Water Act. A lot of times you'll hear of this as the Waters of the United States. They've proposed this new rule which would better define those waters. The need for authorizing me to submit those comments is that their form of accepting comments is electronically. The proposed comments to submit are included in the backup, in the memo, Mojave County's comments to be submitted. Basically, if the board approves, what I would do is go in and enter those comments and submit, so...
Okay.
Basically, the proposed changes would significantly, significantly improve the way that the Waters of the United States are evaluated and determined. Currently, it's pretty broad in their scope and what's considered Waters of the United States. Many dry wash beds and all sorts of different things are considered Waters of the United States. The proposed rule actually limits that down to perennial waters only and tributaries to those perennial waters and excludes a lot of the ephemeral, sorry, ephemeral streams and portions of those streams, so... Be happy to answer any questions.
No questions?
Motion approved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carried, okay. Item 45A, I brought that back. It's a discussion, possible action to reconsider item number 37 from the March 4, 2019 Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting, which failed based on a 2-2 vote with one member absent, that member being me. So after I watched the meeting, I realized that, you know, there's consequences to every time you don't show up to a meeting and I thought that it was only fair for this item to get the full board and so I wanted to bring it back for reconsideration. So I make a motion to reconsider item...
And I'll second the motion.
Point of order.
Yes.
Since you were not on the prevailing side, I don't think that you can make a motion to reconsider.
You told me I can.
I believe you can. I mean, and certainly open for discussion. My position is kind of three parts to this. First and foremost, we got to make sure that we're following any Arizona revised statutes. There's nothing in the Arizona revised statutes that specifically say, that talk about reconsideration motions or anything like that. There's hardly anything in ARS about the rules of procedure for legislative bodies, at least for the county, okay? So that's one. Secondly, then, you look at our rules of order and we have our rules of order and in the rules of order, it talks about a reconsideration at that meeting. That's what it's talking about. That's the way I interpret it, that's the way I read it. So, we're not at the same meeting. This is a month later. This is a different meeting. So someone else is bringing up an item, okay? Because normally, normally at the meeting to do a reconsideration, it has to be from the prevailing party. This is a different, entirely different meeting. So the third thing that I look at is I look at the Roberts Rules of Order. And the way I read Roberts Rules of Order, and it's very clear, at least in my mind it's clear, is that the reconsideration is for that legislative assembly, that one that had the legislative assembly. So we had the meeting, at that meeting, that's when you do the reconsideration. That's what our rules of order talk about. This is an entirely new meeting. So entirely new meeting means that I think anybody should be able to. Now, I understand and I fully disclose that that is contrary to the practice this board has done for many, many years. I do. I think it's typically, it typically is when we bring back an item for reconsiderations by the prevailing party from the previous meeting. But if you're asking me, what legal position or what legal authority does that have, I can't find it. I can't, that's my honest truth. So, in this situation, we don't, I mean Supervisor Gould points out she was not part of the prevailing party. That's correct. But she also wasn't on the losing side either. So how do you go with that? I am of the opinion, I'd encourage the board to allow this because you want to be able to bring things back and be able to have an opportunity. I'm not saying that this will pass again, it may fail again, or it could. But now you have a fifth person, someone who was not of the previous one, who was not on the prevailing side, but also was not on the losing side. So, I, there's nothing in the law that would prevent the supervisor from bringing this back. But I recognize that it is a different practice than our, than this board has typically done in terms of bringing back a reconsideration. But I don't know if we've ever had a situation where we didn't, where we had a supervisor who was not here that is now bringing back the item.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would argue it was agendized as a reconsideration and it is not truly a reconsideration. It's a new issue that you brought up before the board. A reconsideration would have been done at that meeting.
Yes. This is the standard practice that this county has done for, since Time Memorial, is if something failed or something passed, whatever happened at a previous meeting, to bring it back, the standard practice is a reconsideration.
We've done many reconsiderations over the years on items that have been brought back by people who have, were on the winning...
Madam Chairman, my argument is that it's agendized as a reconsideration and it is not a reconsideration.
Well, but he's saying that that is what we've been doing. So I have to go with our legal team. I don't know what to do here. He's saying it's not legal, you're saying it's legal.
I think it's legal. I mean, if somebody wants to challenge me, let's go to court and we'll do it. I mean, well, that's how we do things, you know?
I'm going to go with our legal counsel on this, Supervisor Gould.
But I recognize, here's the problem. I mean, the standard practice that the county has done, at least from my research and talking with other people and looking at the past agendas, is the prevailing party is the only one that can bring back for reconsideration. In this instance, we don't have somebody, this person that's bringing this back was not on the prevailing party, was not on the losing party, was on neither one. So this is different than we've ever seen. So I'm just trying to see, you know, what is the best practice for Mojave County, what would allow the best opportunity? And I think that somebody who was not there for the vote should be allowed to bring it back.
And you feel, you obviously feel confident with that. And you're saying if anyone thinks differently, have at it. But I'm going to go with you, we're going to move on, because I asked, when I asked if I can bring it back, I asked you and you said this is the way to do it.
That's my opinion. If we were to, if somebody were to take a suit against the Mojave County, say this is illegal, well, my first analysis would be what law would, is Mojave County breaking? I don't see anything in the Arizona revised statutes that prohibits it. Secondly, I don't see anything in the rules of order that would prohibit it. So there's two. So the Roberts Rules of Order is not the law of the land. It's a guideline that legislative bodies will often use to assist and make things go. The other part is obviously we want to make sure we're in compliance with the open meeting laws. And this is properly agendized, it's been agendized, we're reconsidering this particular item, the public is aware that that's what we're doing and therefore I think that that part is legal as well.
Okay, so let's move on. So there's a motion, there's a motion and second. Okay, let's do a roll call.
And let me make sure, all we're doing right now is just to reconsider the item.
Just to reconsider, yes.
There was a motion to reconsider.
A motion to reconsider and who seconded it?
Supervisor Watson, you made the motion, he seconded it.
I made the motion, okay.
Correct. Just to reconsider, not to approve the item.
No, just to reconsider.
Just to reconsider the item.
Yeah.
And let me make clear too, I'm sorry that I'm beating a dead horse here. This is a situation where I don't know if we've ever encountered where somebody was not there for the previous vote. Now, if the board wants to follow the standard practice of you can, only the prevailing party can bring back a reconsideration motion, we're still staying true to that in the sense that that person was not here for the vote. That person was not here. They were not on the prevailing party, but they also were not on the losing party.
Okay, I think we got it. Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Using that same logic, why do I bother to show up? I could just come into the next meeting and undo, and take another crack at whatever we had beforehand.
You could.
See if your constituents like that all the time.
Bear in mind, I was a senator and the job of the senators is to argue.
Were you a senator? Really? I didn't know that.
So I like to argue.
Well, I appreciate it. Look, we're here, we're here to figure it out. I'm not, I don't have the corner on always being right. I certainly, I'm trying to lay it out for the board so they understand what my position is and why I make that position.
You know, can I say something as a chairman? If this wasn't something that was timely, I'd say, you know, let's do the whole thing, even though I'm pretty sure, because I trust Ryan Esplin. And if something comes up, then, you know, and renders it null and void, I'm sure we'll hear about it. But right now, I kind of want to move on.
Certainly. And I'd be in a position to have to defend it.
Okay.
And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
I'm counting on you, Ryan.
There you go.
Okay. Clerk?
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now, to what we are reconsidering, and this was an acknowledgement and receipt to refer to Public Works petition to the Mojave County Board of Supervisors requesting that North Interstate Way from East Santa Fe, Sa... that whole thing. And I just want to say that I don't really think we need to debate this again, because I watched it on the video, it was debated. I think, I don't think anyone's votes are going to change. So I would say, I know people signed up for it, we heard it to, you know, last month we heard it, and if it's okay with you guys, I would, I would just rather move and move on into the vote. Am I allowed to do that?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion
Okay.
for the approval. I acknowledge the receipt and refer to Public Works petition, Mojave County Board of Supervisors requesting items 1, 2, 3, and 4, including East Finance to East Portway and all in the Kingman area industrial airpark facility to be accepted by Mojave County Road System for regular maintenance, subject to all meeting applicable requirements and subject to board approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 46, discussion, possible action, adopt a resolution supporting the passage of State of Arizona Bill SJR 103 designating the portion of historic Route 66 located between Seligman and Kingman as qualified veterans highway.
Thank you, Chairman Angus. Actually, I met with James Wotony in Seligman just of this last week. He made a special request that we support the bill 1003, designating a portion of US Route 66 between Kingman and Seligman as the Walupi Veterans Highway. And I bring that to you in hopes that we can honor the Walupi tribal members that served in many of our wars.
Okay, so a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, we're into the same situation again, items 47A and 47B. Again, I know people sat through this whole meeting to talk about it, but if it's okay, I think we're just going to go because we all heard the discussion and debate and the pros and cons. So 47A is to reconsider item number 21 from the March 4, 2019 Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting.
And Chairman Angus, we are in a slightly different posture on this, just for the record. This is where everybody voted in favor of it. So this would be the classic, any person could bring this as a reconsideration, just so you're aware of that. Four people voted in favor of this item.
Wait a second.
Excuse me, Chairman Angus. The board did vote in favor, however...
Right.
They omitted the last sentence in what was approved. So they approved all the way through Kingman Industrial Park, period.
Right.
But did not approve the portion that said, "And future petitioning to the Board of Supervisors for consideration and acceptance into the Mojave County Road Maintenance Program."
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, so we're still going to go with the motion to reconsider.
You can do that.
All right. Okay, Supervisor Gould?
What?
With that? Just one, no.
Okay, with what?
The reconsider.
No, you guys have already done what you're going to do and so you've set a precedent and now we're going to do it again.
But this is, but this is different. I just wanted you to know that you know that, that this is different because everybody voted yes on it.
Yes.
Okay.
On the amended...
That's all.
The motion that I amended.
Right. That's all. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, wait, are we doing a motion? We're doing, we got to do the first, the motion to reconsider.
Wait, wait, wait.